Okay, folks, welcome everyone. Hope you had a wonderful, safe, cool holiday. I'd like to call a meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a nice vibrant crowd. I'll throw a call Mr. Reedson.
Justice Pearson.
Here.
Trustee Vance.
Here.
Treasurer Dela.
Here.
Clerk Reedson.
Here.
Supervisor Kramer.
Here.
All present. Board member conflict of interest statements, any?
None here.
None here.
Approval of media agenda. I'd like to add paragraph 5A, a short address by our county commissioner Wallace who was here today. If no one objects.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Commissioner Wallace.
No, no, but you're adding what, 8A?
5A.
5A.
Any other changes? Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm going to get motion.
Second?
I'll support it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Well, those of you who don't know me, I am John Wallace. I'm still John Wallace. I'm here really, Mr. Supervisor, I'm here really for a reason, and that's to apologize to this board of trustees. We talked about fake news, and I threw the alarm out on the bump outs on the road there, and I apologize. I apologize to everybody that was involved in it. I need to apologize to you tonight, so please accept my apology. So it's short and sweet.
That was so gracious of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And while we have an opportunity on behalf of the whole community, we want to thank you for your support in getting $100,000 from the county for Cooperation Park.
Not too shabby, eh?
That's a really big deal. I mean, we're talking about replacing lead pipes in bathrooms and some other stuff, so this is a really big deal. Public comment on agenda items, please. Step right up.
I want to talk about the planning commission consent agenda. At the August 23 Planning Commission meeting, it's in the draft minutes that we discussed several items, one of them being that the tree cutting at the airport as well as the sale of airport property. I know that there's a strip on the west side that it looks like you guys are considering selling, and I wondered when that ever was before you applied for it, when that was discussed by the board. So I wanted to bring that up. The tree cutting that was approved was 30 acres at a cost of $2,500. I asked about it. I was told we're going to make a profit. There is a cost associated with it. It has increased from 30 acres to 71 acres. And I don't recall that being brought up at a board meeting, that we were increasing from 30 to 71, or the additional cost. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was the halt of the master plan work. We were told, I was told by NEMCOG that Supervisor Kramer said they were to stop working on the master plan until further notice. That is a board action. It can't be done by just one person on the board. That was approved by the board last October, and so in order to undo a board action, you have to have a board action. And I have a problem with that. I don't, there was no board meeting to discuss that stoppage. You're still on the hook for that contract. It's a $16,000 contract, so right now we're in breach because we've made a change without approval. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was the suspension of the planning commission's budget. You guys can change the budget at any time, but it has to be done in an open meeting in front of the board with board approval. That didn't happen. Somebody just arbitrarily made the decision, and I know that you all know about it because it was in the email that we got, or the letter that we got from Kramer, that he CC'd the board on all of this. So all of those things need to be, I don't even know how to fix this. I don't know what you guys do to fix this, but it needs to be addressed because all of it was done outside of an open meeting.
Hello, my name is Patrick McGinnis, and I'd like to discuss agenda item 9D. As I understand it, Bob Kramer is planning on asking the township board to pass a resolution committing the township to offer a reward of $1,000 for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the person or persons responsible for the recent break-ins in Indian River. This is easy for Bob to do, as it is the township's money that he wants to spend. So I'm offering another option for the board to vote on. Have the resolution read that in addition to the $1,000 of the people's money, also have each of the board members commit to a $1,000 donation to their reward fund. If they vote on this type of resolution and pass it with five votes for and none against, Jane and I will put up $1,000. This would make the total amount of the reward for $7,000. Once passed, all seven of us, each board member and Jane and I can set a time to meet in the office of the Tuscora Township Police Department and deposit the cash with the chief so that the rewards can be promptly paid upon conviction. If the individuals are not arrested before November 1, then the reward money, $7,000, would be given to the police department to hand out in $100 amounts to seven families in need in Tuscora Township for help over the holiday season. There would be no reporting of individuals who received the gift without their permission. Thank you.
Public comment?
I'd like to speak to old business 8A parking concept. I know you all pride yourself and desire to be transparent, but reading the summary of the parking concept, I find some important information that would be helpful to have, but it's missing. That is that it neglects to spell out the two sites for parking being considered for the $5,000 study that's going to be done on two parcels. So I find that the summary unfortunately does not have sufficient information for anybody that was reading it to know what's being talked about. I would appreciate it in the future if you would be more careful about your summaries and be more specific because we otherwise, we have no idea what you consider in the way of parking. And I hope you would postpone it so that citizens have an opportunity to have some input. After all, if we do put in parking, which is greatly needed, then it will be with us for a very long time, much longer than all the board members here plan to be around. So I think that we do, that the citizens do have a right to expect that they'll have the opportunity to at least discuss and give input before you make a decision.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I think this is under new business B, but I could be wrong. I thought we hired Puckett and Cooney as our attorney, and Matt Cross worked for them. So if Matt is no longer working for them, shouldn't they have assigned us another attorney? Or is this a polite way of them saying they don't want to work with Tuscora Township as a client? When we hired Matt, one of the reasons was we hired him because he had access to many expertise in the field downstate. Do you know the reason why he resigned? You state Matt has proposed an agreement with a new firm, but by your bylaws, shouldn't it go out for another bid rather than just follow him along?
Thank you. Any more public comment? Public comment is closed. Consent agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda.
I'd like to pull the planning commission out of the consent agenda.
Okay. Let's put that as 9F. Anything else? Anything else? Minutes. Need to pull that out, put it up, make it 8B. I made a slight error. Any others? So with the exception of planning and minutes, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so the parking concept. So I move, may I start with the motion? I move that we hire ONG advisors to provide us with three, two, two concepts, actually, there are three of the possible parking areas. One is the parking area here next to the chamber, and then the other one behind Mr. Waldron's place and Ms. Ashworth's place. Is there a second?
I'll support it.
Discussion. I know that the board directed that we looked at this last month, but I asked the board permission to go to the DDA. So the DDA got to discuss it. They're on board with it. What I would like to do is when we get, this is just thinking out loud now, doesn't mean we have to do it, but what I would prefer to do is once we get these drawings and these assessments, I would like to go back, present it to the DDA, and then depending on what they do, if it goes to the next step, I'd like to have a public hearing so everybody can have input. Just like we did on the streetscape where, you know, you had a special meeting, everybody got their say. I just, it worked so well, I just would like to do that again. But for now, because it's under $5,000, we can award this work, and frankly, because they have almost all the data, it probably saved us several thousand dollars because we don't have to go out and get surveys and readings and everything. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I had a question. I had a question. Going back to where was the other lot? That was the first question I had.
I'm sorry?
Where was, there was two locations. One was right here, the parking lot between the 310 and the chamber. Okay, 310 and the chamber, okay.
And the other one is?
Right, I know where the other one is, yeah.
Behind.
Behind Walton's property over there, right. Are they going to come in and do a complete assessment of how many parking spots we have today? In other words, will they do an inventory of where we have parking spots, both private and public?
No, they're just going to come up.
Then how do we know that we need additional parking?
Because you all told us last meeting you needed additional parking. And the meeting before that, you told us we needed additional parking.
I'm not sure you did, but?
Well, the board did.
Yeah, the board did. But can that be done? Can they come back with an assessment of where we have parking? Is it private or public?
That would cost us extra money.
Okay, well?
But they will tell us how many parking spaces we can gain under different scenarios.
Do we have a goal? Do we have any idea what we're looking for in terms of additional parking?
I don't think we should. I think we need to let it develop because this isn't going to happen in a month. And as the in-between, I mean, they haven't even started building yet. So I would let them tell us how many parking spots we can gain at A and B, and don't forget, that's pretty big over there. That could be done in phases.
Okay, the other question is, is this going to be paved parking, or is it going to be, you know, asphalt and gravel, depending on where the parking location is?
Haven't got that for you.
Okay. So we need some?
I would hope it would be paved.
So we need some requirements, something?
Yeah. Well, first we see what it looks like, and then depending on what the green decides, we develop the requirements, right?
Okay. So we'll develop the requirements at the community input?
For example, the community may decide that they would like to have the same kind of lighting that we have for our streetscape and these parking areas. Might be one thing that's going to add to the cost. Any other discussion? Okay, so let's vote all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, quick correction to the minutes. I made a mistake. Didn't catch it. But there are two places in the minutes that talked about REUs. And it is on August 1st item 8D. It says sewer REU criteria sheet for residential duplex to be charged 2 REUs, parentheses, 8,000 dollars per REU. That should be deleted.
8,000. So it's not $8,000 per REU?
It depends on where you are. So if you're in this district, it would be 8,000, but it's some future district, it could be far more. And then we have the same problem right below that where it says telehealth room to be charged .4 REUs, AK per REU. So we just need to put a line between those two AK slash REUs. And that's my only correction.
So it is AK per REU for the VA claim?
It is, but for the criteria sheet, it is not.
So now, so now I'm confused. We said?
So we have a sewer criteria sheet?
Yep.
That no matter where you are, and no matter whether you're in phase 1, 2, 3, if we ever had those, right, it will tell you a telehealth room is .4 REUs, but we shouldn't specify the price on that sheet, and we did not.
And that I agree with. My confusion is, is that I think we said that the VA claim is 5 REUs plus, 1 plus 5, which gets me to 6.
Right.
6 times 8 is 48, and I think we said 40 in the minutes.
Correct, because 1 was already paid.
Got it.
By the previous owner, in full.
But it was 8,000 for those REUs.
Correct.
But on the criteria sheet, we're going to have a cost associated.
Right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Jay software request.
So we need to have a, this is for BSNA software purchase request. We're in need of miscellaneous accounts receivable software, which would be required for managing customers, billing items, invoices for cemetery, airport, trailer park permits, food truck permits, boat launch fees if we're fortunate to get a QR code down there to boat launch, grants, park access fees, meeting room fees. There's just so many different fees, and cemetery fees, I said that. So I covered that. There's a number of areas where you have fees, but we don't have the ability to actually bill or invoice for those fees. Also, the recurring invoices could be set up as a technical memory year after year, such as trailer park fees and others, for example, where we simply, it gives us a heads up that we need to put that information out there and bill those folks. Other benefits include paperless billing, scan line, collections entry, batch balancing, detailed reports, and penalty assessment on process if necessary. So it's going to give us efficiencies, future budgeting accuracy, and additional quality will benefit from this cash receipt software. The financial impact is about $510 per year once we pay for the upfront cost. The upfront cost is $2,545, and there are, there is training involved to some extent, and we're not sure, but it's probably in the neighborhood of $2,000 if we go with that amount of training. So it's going to be 5,000, or not to exceed $5,000 total cost. So I'd like to move to approve the purchase of miscellaneous receivables software, not to exceed $5,000, using treasurer's budget and for software maintenance agreements, and then go from there.
Is there a second?
I'll support that.
Discussion. You're okay with them using your money?
Not mine, the taxpayers.
You know what I mean.
Yes. I?
What does this do for us? That's my question.
I probably spent two hours over the weekend looking at the hangar payments to see where people are in relation to where their lease is because we don't have the ability currently to send them a bill inside an accounting system. And if you find an accountant who will tell, who tells you that it's a good idea to bill outside an accounting system, run, because we don't like it. Can't keep track of who's, you sent the bill out, you hope the money comes in. If the money doesn't come in, you got to build a manual file that says, hey, I sent Bob a bill. Bob didn't pay his bill. Let me follow up with Bob. All of that's built into the tax system that we currently have. But as we add other fees, we need the ability to put those bills in. And I tried to figure out a way to get the utility billing to let us do that, and BSNA is smarter than that, won't let you do it. So I think it's a great idea.
So it's going to make us more efficient?
Yes.
And does this do what the others do, where it flows from module to module?
Yes.
So for example, on the trailer park permits, we went, I think it was three years, or was it? No, five years. Five years without paying for trailer park. Having the trailer parks pay their taxes, it wasn't until the county called us up and said, hey, you owe us some money, and you owe the state some money, that we actually were able to contact the trailer parks and then obviously ask them by letter to give us the money they owe us, and they owed the county and they owed the state. With this system, it becomes autonomous in a sense, not fully autonomous, but the ability to basically prompt you to say, hey, what about this? I need to get this invoice out. And it's traceable, it's a paper trail or a digital paper trail, and that's what we need for the auditors. They start asking questions on, where did this come from? Show me the evidence, so.
And, you know, we have an amount that the timber folks have told us that they're going to send us. The grants are the same way. Instead of having a manual spreadsheet that says we're supposed to get this much, and we subtract every time we get a check outside of the accounting system, or run a report to figure that out, the receivable system will help us on that.
Awesome. So the $3,500 deposit that we already got on the trees could have went in that program?
It could, yes, yes.
Is there any more discussion?
Yeah. So you're saying, the way I understand it is because this is going to be more efficient, we'll get our money back in just efficiency and effectiveness in order to, because right now, you're telling me, this is what I'm getting, that it's a little haphazard, like, okay, it's like we're doing it, but it's not processed like it should be for like the auditors or for us to keep track of it. And so this will make it more efficient, which will actually save money.
I think you're eliminating some redundancy too, right?
I have yet to see how it integrates with all the other modules, but, but yes, it will eliminate a lot of manual spreadsheets that are being created.
Any more discussion?
Just that we have a growing workload. We have grants. We're up to six grants right now, I think.
Do we have more coming?
With more coming. We had one grant, ARPA, last year now we're up to six with more coming. Same with bonds, you know, we have at least, I believe it's five different bonds right now, and with more coming. So rather than hiring additional people, we get these efficiencies and we can basically utilize the greater productivity to take on additional work. So that's why we need it.
Any more discussion?
I have a question. So you're saying that the previous board didn't catch that with the trailer park, with the taxes?
Correct. For the last five years, yes.
For the last five years.
But in the defense of the board, it's not the board's responsibility to bill the trailer park owners, it's the trailer park owner's responsibility to pay the tax.
That's right.
That is true. And, but again, people are people, and you need to be prompted for certain things. And the state wanted the money, and the county wanted the money, so we were the, we were on the boat to provide that. So anyways, it's, it worked out, but needless to say, that type of thing can be avoided.
And the ill will that goes along with it.
Have you worked with this before?
I have not worked with this module before, but they're all built the same way.
Excuse me, can we have quiet in the back there, please?
Once you understand how the modules work and the interface, it's, they're not difficult to master. And the auditors like it, so.
Lock, so they can charge us more?
No. Believe it or not, the software that we had prior, BSNA created more work for the auditors, so.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on. Can we skip legal agreement? The lawyer isn't here yet. Can we move to cemetery fees? Any objection?
No objection.
No objection.
Jay?
Yeah, I just need to find it.
There you go.
I've got it, I've got it, yes. So what are we doing next here?
Cemetery.
So I have in the packet made a recommendation for cemetery fees. This would be for purchase of burial plots, it'd be for interim and disinterim fee, the burial permit, in other words, cemetery plot deed transfers or duplication of deeds, bottom lots fees, splits, et cetera. So if you look at the fees, essentially we're increasing, I believe, the burial plots for residents from 250 to 300, for non-residents from 500 to 600. The open close fees for caskets are for the burial, different days and different conditions varies over, but that has an additional $30 township fee, which was $25. Those fees have already gone up this year based on, you know, what the contractor required. As far as foundation duties, those I believe have stayed the same. Well, they've gone up too, but they've stayed the same from the last time we published these. So our miscellaneous fees would all be $30 for what I talked about in the introduction. They went up from 25 to 30.
So your motion is?
So the motion is to approve the burial fees, as mentioned, from 250 to 300, from 500 for non-residents to 600, and all published fees changed from 25 to 30 dollars per service or burial permits. burial permits, deeds, et cetera.
Is there a second?
I'll support.
Discussion. I went through a lot of townships that have cemeteries that are, you know, not perpetual care, and we're still very, very low.
Yeah, I looked at six to eight different townships, and if you average them out in terms of what they were, that's where we end up with about 300 and about 600. Some for non-residents in other townships, again, I can't speak to why, but they were as high as $2,000. So they're still very attractive, I guess.
I think it's important we raise the fees. We're spending thousands, tens of thousands of dollars. Even though it's not perpetual care, it's still, those trees are still our responsibility. We still don't have them under control. We made a lot of progress, but we got a lot farther to go. So I think it's, this is very modest and minimal, and I think we need to do it. How long ago was?
The old fee structure wasn't dated, so I can't really tell you. It's been like, probably at least two or three years at the very least. Just as a point of information, this year, from April 26th till the day, to date, we've managed 24 burials of one sort or another. So it's not just here and there. This is like four burials per month that we're averaging. It's not just burials, it's foundations, headstones, those kinds of things that need to be put in place. But it takes a lot of time and something that Karen Decker has been very, very good at dealing with, with the people, as well as the gravedigger, as well as the funeral directors, et cetera. So she's done a great job. But that gives you an idea. There was a guy at the window today. Hey, cemetery.
Any more discussion?
Did Bruce take a look at these fees? Is he good with them?
Bruce is getting the fees that he wants, yes.
Okay. And he's not looking to surcharge for holidays, holiday weekends?
I don't think he wants to do it on holiday weekends.
Okay. He's made exceptions, but he wants to charge extra. My concern would be if we're going to do that, we need to publish the fee.
Yeah, I don't think we need it.
Okay. Good. Simple's better.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Passes. Reward resolution. I make the, a motion for the following resolution. Whereas there were three break-ins of businesses in the township on August 19th and 20th of 2023, whereas the Board of Trustees are ultimately responsible for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens, whereas the Board of Trustees have whore and will not tolerate such criminal activity in Tuscarora Township, and will do everything necessary to protect businesses and our citizens. Whereas the Board of Trustees has full faith and confidence in the township's police department to solve these crimes, therefore be resolved the Tuscarora Township Board of Trustees in order to assist and support our police, set aside by resolution, $1,000 as a reward upon the arrest and conviction of all suspects responsible. Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Which budget are we taking now?
To be determined when we catch them. Probably out of community activities under Board of Trustees. I'll catch them first.
I like the fact that it's upon the arrest and conviction of. I like that. And that's the way it should be.
Chief, did you want to make any comments?
Not at this time.
Will this be helpful?
It would be. I think certain kids would sell their mother for $1,000.
That's a shame, but I understand.
I'd never sell my mother for $1,000, but who knows? Thank you, chief. Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, so who did the second?
I did.
So do we need a roll call?
No.
I think we should.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Trustee Vance?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
And trustee Dela?
Treasurer Dela says yes.
Treasurer Dela, yeah, okay. Wrong. Clerk Reitzma says yes. Supervisor?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution is declared adopted. Thank you all. You're going to make the flyers, right, chief?
Yep, I'll get it out.
Got some good pictures, don't you?
I do.
Okay. Budget adjustments. Jay?
So we have several more budget adjustments. The first one is with the police, who, the chief is fortunate to get a training grant for $24,000 for a recruit that's already underway, the train is underway. Grant came through M. Coles, and covers training wages and travel. So what we're interested in doing is adjusting both the revenue side and the expense side, so that once this grant comes in, it can basically fund what needs to take place for the additional training that's still going on. And on the expenditure side, we'll bump up his training wages and travel. So the move here is to approve the end revenue of $24,000 to the police revenue fund, 207, under grants, 207,000, 000, 1000. So we already have a grant area set up to, and to approve expense budget increases of $8,000 for each of the bottom accounts, travel, wages, and training.
I will support that.
Can I make a quick correction?
Yes.
It's wages, training, and lodging.
Okay.
Lodging.
Yes.
Yeah, I called it travel, but, okay, lodging?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, chief. So we had a second?
That was me.
Any discussion?
No.
Chief, how's this going to help?
Well, let's see, we had an opening for six months, didn't have any applicants. He's a young, energetic kid, he's 21. It's going to help out tremendously. He's very eager.
And you had, you've been stepping in. A lot of people don't know it, but the chief's been working the road since.
January 14th.
So he's doing double duty. He's doing his chief duty and the road duty. So he's been a busy guy, not getting much time off. And this man's extremely dedicated. I want to thank you, chief. I'm a little upset at you because you gave up some of your vacations for this township, but we all appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We need to vote?
We need to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay.
No, but.
Oh, you got another one.
You got another one.
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right.
Got a few of those. Yeah, it was part of the budget.
This one is relative to election expense, and I'm just going to read a little bit of this for the audience. We're going to have early elections, beginning with the primary, or not, for the presidential election in February, where there'll obviously, there'll be a primary for Republicans and for the Democrats. That's the plan. So now that we have to have nine days of early voting for this presidential primary, the rules and regulations continue to be developed. It's very difficult, it's a moving target. So attempting to do early voting in the township has significant risks and significant costs until we can count on a stated process. Early voting will be a personal choice for the voter since we still have AV, and the precinct voting will also be available. We're also most likely going to have four elections next year. One will be the presidential primary. There'll be a may election if there's a school, village, and then there's the primary for the general, and then the general. So what I'm asking for here is that the county has already planned on organizing this early voting, which is essentially two weekends and five days in between. So two, Saturday, Sunday, prior to the actual Tuesday election. And it'll be done up at the county building. What this funding will do would be to help defray the cost to the county, because all 20 townships and cities will be involved. We don't know yet what the costs are going to be, though, because they haven't, we haven't got that information as well. So the recommendation here is to move to approve budget adjustment not to exceed $1,000 for Tuscarora's sheer expense to participate in the county-wide early voting for the presidential primary. And just so you know, there's one other caveat to this that really doesn't apply as long as we're going to be working with the county. But if we were to do this, we would have to notify the county by 9:30, by September 30th, and have all the other conditions in place, obviously, to do that. And that's a very short time horizon. So I recommend that we go along with the county.
So is that part of your motion?
The motion still stands. That's just information. Motion stands that we would need a budget adjustment not to exceed $1,000 for Tuscarora's shared expense, which would come out of our election cost.
A second?
I have a question. That is 9:00.
We have to have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, go ahead. Discussion.
Is that 9:30 a.m. or 9:30 p.m.?
They want to know by the end of September.
I'm sorry, September 30th.
Didn't you say 9:30 though?
Yeah, I was reading my paper here.
Oh, okay. Like, what is that?
September 30th, 2023.
Okay.
Which is three weeks away, where they really, as a township, you need to notify the county you're going to do this. And we have no idea what all the requirements are yet. We went to one meeting, and even the county doesn't have any idea what all the requirements are. So it's best that we tag along, and if we find out that we really should have early voting in the future, we can do that.
And the county didn't really have to do this for us, did they?
No.
Oh, yeah. Why are they doing this? Because they're nice people?
I think, I think it works out for everybody's best interest, obviously, at the time.
That's a lot of work they're putting on themselves.
10 hours a day for nine days, three people manning the polls here. It's tough to ask anybody to do that.
It's going to be about $400 a day for nine days. And that's not the worst part about it. The worst part is trying to find people that want to do it on a Saturday and a Sunday.
And Ms. Brewster's taken all this on her share?
Yes. Well, with the help of the township, she's, you know.
So we're responsible to help defray the cost and get some volunteers to help with that?
Yeah, she's putting out something in writing to that effect. She hasn't had a chance yet to get that.
And they'll go through the training and everything that they need.
Well, and/or we will, as we, if we provide some volunteers. Maybe it's for a day or two, I don't know, but we'll see.
Okay. And is she applying for a grant to help with some of this? Because I heard there was some state funding available.
Supposedly $30 million available across the state for 83 counties. Do the math, that's not a lot for a county or township. So I'm sure she'll try to get a grant for whatever expenses she can minimize. But in the end, the township's work would have had to bear the cost anyways if we worked together, only walk elections at 20. So the cost is much less.
So during that nine-day early voting, if you're voting in this precinct, you have to actually go up to the county and vote there, and then we'll still have our election day here on the 10th day?
We will still have absentee ballot voting, plus the election here on the.
In-person voting?
In-person voting.
Okay.
On the Tuesday. So just to make it simple, it becomes a personal choice. If you want to do early voting, then yes, you do have to drive to Sheboygan to do that.
Okay.
If you want to do early voting and get an absentee ballot, you don't have to drive there and go get you the absentee ballot. So, or if you want to insist on putting the ballot in the tabulator, you can do that on Tuesday. People have a choice.
A related question.
Precinct underwear, favorite.
A related question. Has anyone up there, or here, or anywhere in Lansing figured out how to get the dead people off the rolls?
I'd rather not answer that question. It's a mystery.
Okay.
I'll pipe in, if you don't mind. Isabella County just won a lawsuit that got 24,000 people removed from the voter rolls against the Secretary of State's wishes, but the court sided. There is some progress being made on the state level.
Now, maybe somebody have got the message. Okay, is there any further discussion on that budget adjustment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
The last budget adjustment is where we started the meeting. That's for the planning commission. Not quite sure how to summarize this, but we are at odds with the planning commission, the board and the planning commission. Nobody can make any ifs, ands, or buts about that. The planning commission, as you take a look at what the 1971 resolution stated, all plans, regulations, zoning activities of the township and planning commission shall be subject to the approval of the township or Tuscarora Township, which approval shall be required before the same becomes effective. In essence, they become an advisor to the township. But if you take a look at their minutes, you take a look at their annual report, you take a look at the kind of discussions we've been having, it's become very clear that they see their purpose as being something different than what the board sees their purpose as being. So, and as Supervisor Kramer took the opportunity, using the Budget Appropriations Act, to basically slow down the train, I'm simply asking that, as of what I think I heard today too, they will ask the board to vote on this. So I'm making a motion to move the budget adjustment of $12,861 from the planning department's budget, 101701, to contingencies until the issues impacting the board and the planning commission are resolved.
Is there a second?
I support that.
Discussion. We can use the money for the steps, that's for sure.
The only problem with this is that, not that I'm against moving it to contingency till we figure this issue out, is that we still have to get a 10-year plan. So we need to work on the strategy on how that's going to happen. We don't have to maybe come up with that answer today, but I think that is important to keep in mind, that we do have to get the 10-year plan finished. And how we do that, we'll have to develop a strategy for that.
This motion does not cancel the contract. The contract, you know, with Nemcoq would still be in place. We still owe $5,600 in order to complete that contract. It's how we complete the contract and how we end up paying that is the only difference between now and then. Once we move to, should we move to move the budget from one budget center to another.
Ma'am? I'd see. Excuse me.
Okay. So what you're saying is that, and I understood this to be true already, but I'm just doubling saying, that's okay, that the contract is not canceled?
Right.
It's more or less just frozen till we figure out what we're going to do.
And we need to work with Nemcoq, and I want it to stay frozen before they need additional monies or before whatever the next.
And that'll be up to us to figure out.
Be up to the board to figure out.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Let's go, now that Mr. Cross is here, let's go to our legal agreement. As I said in the summary, Honk and Cooney terminated their agreement with the township. Due to Mr. Cross's resignation, he's proposed an agreement with his new firm, Cummings, McClory, Davis, and Paco. he's proposed an agreement with his new firm, Cummings, McClory, Davis, and Paco. So I've asked Mr. Cross if it's okay with the board to talk to us a little bit about what happened, why it happened, some possible suggestions on the way forward.
Yeah, so the short version is, it was really--
Could you go to the floor, please?
Yeah, thank you. Is this a button push situation? Yes. It is? All right. So it was really just sort of a personal decision. I mean, this Cummings McClory, I worked for them for three and a half years before I started at Plunkett Cooney. I mean, it's a great firm. Reason I left in the first place, I didn't feel like I had enough to do. I certainly got that, and a little more than I probably bargained for with Plunkett Cooney. And now I'm leaving with a couple other clients, and I've got plenty to occupy myself. So Cummings McClory offered to make me a partner. So that was, you know, that was a big motivator. Again, it's just the flexibility. I mean, now I can be a bit more available for you guys. My response time is not what I wanted it to be. You guys would email me the past few months. And it's just the nature of working at a place that big. I just didn't have enough time to go around. So it was really just a personal decision. Nothing's going to change for you. You still have direct contact with me. You know, in Plunkett Cooney, you weren't really dealing with anyone else either. I did occasionally use other people for research when I needed to, but I don't need to do that anymore. And I've kind of realized I don't really like other people's work. So I don't like having other people do things for me. So rates are the same. Nothing's changing.
What's the rate?
What's that?
What's the rate?
The same $200 an hour it was when I submitted for the proposals. And for the record, I mean, I did, I was very conscious of what my competitors were charging. So I looked when you guys were going through the RFP process. And that's the same that everyone else who submitted, that's their rate too, so.
So what can you tell us about Cummings, McClory, Davis, and Paco?
Well, I mean--
And their expertise and their depth?
Yeah, I mean, they, you know, they have different practice areas just like Plunkett Cooney does. But, I mean, really, their bread and butter is municipal law. I mean, you'd really be hard pressed to find a community around here that they haven't represented either directly or through litigation. So, you know, they do other things, but municipal law is really what they specialize in. So it's a great firm. It's smaller. It's about half the size of Plunkett Cooney. But, you know, you're really not going to--
How many people?
I counted the other day. It was more than I thought it was. There was like 50 attorneys. But that's also spread across several different states. I mean, we're primarily in Michigan. We've got state offices downstate, some on the west side of the state.
So you're not moving away?
No, no, no. I'm staying here. That was part of my, this is sort of one of my non-negotiable things. There are other communities in this area that I represent. I don't want to leave. So, no, I'll still be here. I'll probably go down to Traverse City where the office is maybe once a month. And I can plan that around anything else, so.
Who are the employment law attorneys there?
The person I would probably use to help, her name is Suzanne Bartos. She's very good. She's actually a former Plunk attorney as well. But, no, she's great. You know, we have, in the Traverse City office, we've litigated, you know, when I was there last time, plenty of employment cases. So, I mean, we do have some, you know, we do have some knowledge in that area as well. We've done some wrongful terminations, some whistleblower claims. So, yeah, so it's something I could probably advise you on generally. But if it's something very specific, Suzanne's great. We've got other people downstate that specialize in that area.
Any other questions for Mr. Cross?
No.
I'd like to move that we sign with Mr. Cross's new firm. Very happy with his work. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
I think we have to put it out for a bit, unfortunately.
Yeah, and for what it's worth, I'll tell you, I just left the East Jordan, City of East Jordan meeting, Health Department of Northwest Michigan. They were faced with the same exact situation. And the way that I look at this and the way that other attorneys look at it too, is you didn't hire Plunkett Cooney. You hired me. Plunkett Cooney didn't come here and interview. The rates are staying the exact same. If you want to go through the proposal process again, by all means, you're just going to get the exact same piece of paper you see in front of you. But now you know what you're getting because I've been doing work for you for a few months now, so.
It's not personal.
Oh, I don't take it personal. That's fine.
That's good, because we have a bidding policy, and I don't want to be the person who just fast-wash this without considering--
The bidding policy requires over $25,000 to have advertisement, three bids. Between 5 and 25, you're supposed to just get quotes. But you can go sole source for good reason. And I think the good reason is, we're going to come up with the same result we came up with last time. Because we had one firm that bid, and we couldn't even talk with them because it would have been a conflict of interest, I believe, with the county. And we had another one that was just one person that didn't have the depth that we required. So I don't know who else we would get that's local. And I certainly don't want another downstate law firm. That's my real concern. I want somebody local that can drive over here like he has done. And we got a lot, he's got a lot invested in us. We got a lot invested in him. We spent a lot of money having him come here for the first three weeks. And he gets right back to you, so.
And I don't, and Bob, I don't disagree with any of that. It's a painful process, but, and all of those are good reasons, but none of those are exceptions in our bidding policy.
We have an exception for sole source between 5 and 25. For good caution. Well, anyway, that's my motion.
Can you restate it?
And we had a second that we signed with--
Cummings, McClory, Davis, and Paco.
We had a second. It was Jay.
Yeah, I second the motion.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Jan Vance?
Yes.
Kim Pearson?
No.
Jan Delhaye?
No.
Jay Brezenaw, clerk, yes. Bob Kramer?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, so--
Say hi to Mr. Richards for me.
Oh, you're in the G?
Yes.
Okay.
Planning Commission. Yes, ma'am. You have the floor.
I have the floor. Okay. Well, I would like to make a motion to repeal the 1970 resolution that established the planning commission.
Say that again.
I would like to make a motion to repeal the 1970 resolution that established the planning commission.
Is there a second?
I second that.
I'm sorry that we've come to this crossroad. I think it's extremely unfortunate. Before we repeal this resolution, I think it might be in our best interest to bring the county in to have a meeting with the township board, the planning commission, and the county to set the expectations of what they believe the rules of engagement are between the county, the planning commission, and the township board.
Help me, we need to repeal it anyways at some point, don't we need to? Aren't we 10 years late or 12 years late? No, 14 years late, or 15 years late. 15 years late on doing this in the first place?
Yes.
I don't think the county has anything to do with it. The resolution is clear. They advise us.
Well, I'm here to the board, and I have been observing and watching the past planning commission meetings and just listening. In my observation, the planning commission is not following the guidelines in which it was established in September of 1970. And we would save the township a lot of money not having a planning commission. The number four of the resolution states, "All plans, regulations, and zoning activities of the Township Planning Commission shall be subject to the approval of the Township Board of Tuscoro Township, which approval shall be required before the same becomes effective." Number five states, "This resolution may be amended or repealed at any time by a majority vote of the entire membership of the Tuscoro Township Board." Are you guys hearing me okay?
Perfect.
The previous board never updated the acts of the 2008, and I do not feel we should update it now. I believe it's a waste of taxpayers' money when the planning commission cannot even follow the original resolution. The planning commission is creating a lot of unnecessary strife between themselves, the township board, and the taxpayers. After watching their meetings, they have no desire to comply, work with, or advise the Tuscoro Township Board on the land usage in our township, in which they were established for. They seem to forget they are appointed by the supervisor of Tuscoro and the Tuscoro Township Board specifically to advise this board on land usage development, not for their own agenda. They are overstepping their boundaries by undermining the authority of Tuscoro Township Board by not following the resolution they were established. And going around them because they do not like the answers they are given from the board on short-term rentals and the cutting of the airport after the board has gotten these answers from professionals that were hired for the projects or the legal opinion of the township attorney. A few simply chose not to sign the policies the board has adopted as we can have, so we can have some compliance and cooperation moving forward. They have received a letter from the township attorney stating that the township policies apply to them, but they continue not to follow them. Also, the letter states failure to comply with those policies could serve as vices for removal from the planning commission. I believe they are acting as a shadow government that is ineffective. They have no voting power, and they have stated they are an autonomous body at their last meeting that does not answer to the township board.
Could you say that again?
I believe that they are acting as a shadow government over us that is, and they are ineffective. They have no voting power, and they have stated they are an autonomous body at their last meeting that does not answer to the township board. They have caused unnecessary expense to the township and have become a burden to the taxpayers. I have seen letters that had already been sent to the Sheboygan County Planning Commission, and after the fact, the Tuscoro Board found out about it after it had already happened because it was attached to the minutes. The last supervisor was the ex-officio of the planning commission. And in my opinion, they developed a relationship with the Sheboygan Planning and Zoning Commission. And the planning commission thinks they can go directly to them instead of reporting to the township board. This is not acceptable. It appears Sheboygan County Planning thinks the new township board agrees with the planning commission's opinions. They get, and this has caused a big problem because we do not even know what the planning commission is sending to Sheboygan County Planning and Zoning because they refuse to let the board know. The planning commission in their last meeting pointed out that their biggest responsibility is guidance on land usage development within the community to the trustees. Yet, they have no voting power, but they continue to go around the board and not advise the board. The Tuscoro Board was elected by the people and are the representatives of the people, not the planning commission. With that being said, I cannot sit here in good conscience and let this kind of behavior go on by the planning commission. I took an oath to do the best job I can do for the taxpayers and to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money and to take a stand to be responsible for the judiciary duties of the community while serving on this board. The planning commission is a burden to the taxpayers. They have made it evident they do not want to work with the board, and I am tired of wasting my valuable time and energy on their agenda when we should be working on priorities of the township. I do not think it's fair to put these new elected members on the planning commission board with such a negative attitude toward the township board. Everything has a season and a purpose, and the planning commission has run its course. We are not a necessity to the township. There's only one other township in Sheboygan County that has a planning commission, and that is Burt, because they have their own zoning. That is my observation.
Any more comments?
In the annual report that they submitted, page three, it says that reviewing development requests as an advisory body to the Sheboygan County Planning and Zoning. It doesn't say anything about advising the Tuscoro Township in this whole document. Many of the things that they advise on, even though they may not be, have to-- well, let's put this way, they're not required to go through Opens Meeting Act regulations because they're an advisory body. But how they do it is very odd to me, and I have a problem with that. Because if a variance or something like that comes up at county, then we get an email and says, "What do you think about this?" The emails all go to the chairman. The chairman submits those opinions from the various planning commission members to the county. The rest of the, the planning commission are not privy to what was said by the other members. There's no discussion. Maybe if we had an Opens Meeting Act voluntary requirement, we would come together as a commission and say, "Hey, what do you think about this variance?" And someone would say this, and somebody would say, "Well, I disagree with that because of..." And we could have a discussion. And then we could speak with one voice. Once we decided the course we wanted to advise the board on, then the board would be, this board here would be advised on the one voice, the one decision that they came up with. But we would be able to have a discussion. Maybe I disagree when I walk in, but then when I hear the other comments, maybe they'll turn my opinion, and I've learned something that I didn't know before. But the way it's going now, it's all done by email, except for the required meetings that they have, like for the 10-year plan or their four required meetings of the year or something like that. So there's a lot of discussion that seems to be going on behind the scenes that even the rest of the planning commission members are not privy to. And I'm very uncomfortable with that because we need to know which each other is saying and why, and have an open discussion, because that's how we learn. And that's how we communicate with each other and this board. Another problem I had was, it said, "As a planning commissioner, you are representative of the people." No, they're not. Not in any way, shape, or form. And then they go on to say, "In theory, this allows a planning commissioner to act without the political considerations that influence elected officials." We represent the people. We are elected to this board. We make the final decisions. And for them to assume that they can't trust us because we might be influenced by other political considerations is beyond the pale. That's just a ridiculous statement on its face. They're more or less putting themselves as a planning commission, "Oh, well, we know best. We know better than the board. We don't have to talk to them because we know better." That is a real problem for me.
Well, you know, I was a freshman in high school when this resolution was made. And I knew the commissioners, the planning commissioners, every single one of them. And they were very, they were business-minded people, but they were very good about advising the board of what was going on. They worked together with the board. They worked together with the Board. They respected each other, and I do not see that happening at all down the road, Janet, even if we would try that because it's very evident from the tones of the voice and the things that are said at these meetings that I have watched, and I have sat here for the last few months and just watched and listened, and it's toxic. And our Township is a great little Township. We do not need this, and it makes me really sad that a few individuals have this attitude that is going on, that they do not want to work with the Board that the people elected. And I, I believe that we need to just make a motion to...
To be clear, I, I don't disagree that the ranker is not good for the community. It's not good for economic development. It's not good for the people that sit on this Board, and it's certainly not good for the people on the Planning Commission. I won't argue that we're not, it hasn't cost us money, but again, I would, I would say, I want to be in a position where we've said we've done all that we can to try and resolve this issue and move forward. I assume that the people in 1970 had a vision for having a Planning Commission that was advisory. I, I would still ask that we table this and look at having the county come in and resolve some of these disagreements in terms of what their process is, what they expect from us, and if that doesn't work, then we can always come back to this.
I don't think the county has anything to do with it. They report to us, we go to the county. There's a, there's an action before the County Planning Commission tomorrow.
There is.
On Paul's Cafe. And we're not speaking with one voice.
So let me clarify, if you don't mind. So if we have this triangulation happening, there's communication between us and the county, there's communication between taxpayers and county planning, there's communication between the Township's planning and zoning and the county planning and zoning, and I'd like to eliminate that, that triangulation for one meeting where people can hear what they need to hear about who's responsible, responsibility and authority and who gets how much of each and hopefully resolve this.
I read that in the resolution. Number four, the resolution states, "All planning, all plans, all plans, regulations and zoning activities of the Township Planning Commission shall be subject to the approval of the Township Board of Tuscora Township, which approval shall be required before the same become effective." That's black and white.
And, and I agree with you, but there are people on the Planning Commission who don't agree with that, and perhaps if they hear that from the county, their minds could be changed.
The county is not...
They should be hearing it from us.
It is from us.
The county's moot, in my view.
We haven't been successful in that communication, so the last, it's the last...
Here's what bothers me. I sat in on one meeting as the next officio, and I specifically advised that group about the legal opinion of our attorney that said we have no authority over short-term rental regulation, none whatsoever.
Except for police powers.
We can have a police powers ordinance which requires registration. So we have to hire somebody to collect the money. So if they don't register, who's gonna enforce it? And you can't inspect them, you can't restrict them, you can't require smoke alarms, you can't require a good neighbor policy. So I told them that, the lawyer told them that, how many times did you tell them that?
At least a couple.
And in Chapter Six, it's just full of it. Short-term rental regulation. Chapter Six is never even gonna get by me. But my concern right now is even if we dissolve this Planning Commission, we really do need a 10-year plan.
We do.
Because it gives us leverage. I mean, it's always given this Township leverage in the PECs. And as I've said many times before, way back in the day before a lot of people were born, I was on a Planning Commission, and that 2012 update was one of the best documents I've ever seen. But this current document scares the hell out of me. So I'm just concerned, regardless of what happens here tonight, how are we gonna get the 10-year plan done because I think it's important? And it helps, it helps the county with our wishes, with the community's wishes.
It helps with economic development as well. I, I have some issues because even in their, even after they've been told numerous times, I should put this back on, even though they've been told numerous times that we don't have the authority to come down on short-term rentals, make all these ordinances that, that they seem to think that we need to have, they still put in their annual report, knowing how the Township Board feels about it, develop a plan for addressing STRs, which is short-term rentals, in the community. I told them, I said, "The people that have the short-term rentals are working on, on a good neighbor policy as a private citizens, doing what they can." Didn't seem to bother them, they didn't take that out, and I, and to put it, to put it in writing, that's, that as one of their goals, that's unacceptable. It should've been pulled out along with a couple other things, like their advisory to the Sheboygan County Planning and Zoning. They have no zoning authority, and their preoccupation with, with trying to do zoning is quite evident if you read Chapter Six. You know, another issue that they have, and maybe I'm picking on them, but I, I don't want to be like that, but they said one of their goals is to ensure new growth and development in the Township is in compliance with the master plan. The master plan is a guide, is a suggestion, is, is just a vision of where we want to go. But to think that they are going to ensure, which to me that means enforcement, to make sure it's in compliance with the master plan, that's, they're just to try to make a go- a, a guide for us to go towards, but it's not written in stone. And I think that is, that is something that I have an issue with as well. I think they're, they've pretty much expanded their scope of authority more than what this Board or any other Board has really given them. They've got comfortable with it, and now they think they're entitled to do it, and they're not. They're supposed to be advising us so we know what's going on. And when you said the word, Kim, "shadow government," it clicked with me because it's almost like they put themselves above this Board. We're the tip of the spear, but they put themselves above it, and then they go to county, and they're telling the county things we have no knowledge of. We don't know, and, and they're kind of like steering it in a direction we have no knowledge of what they're steering the direction in. And we need to be involved in this somewhere, and we're supposed to be according to this. And as a fiction, as ex officio, and I've only attended two meetings, but that doesn't mean I haven't been paying attention. I said, "Well, there's, you, if there's something that affects this Board or some information that needs to go to the Board, you need to write the paper and send it to the Board." They said, "No, you're the ex officio, that's your job." That's what they told me. That's not my job. My job is to represent what the Board's directives are and what I think that the Board needs is, and I'm only one vote on the Board, but what I think would go with the Board. I don't, my job is not to represent the Planning Commission here. My job is to represent the Board of Trustees there. And I don't think they get that because if they can write a paper explaining their position to county, I think they could very well write one to us first.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm not worried about a 10-year plan. I think we're smart enough people that we can figure it out. I've taken a lot of project management classes in my work, and you've been on the Planning Commission. I think that we would be saving the taxpayers money and a lot of headache for all of us because we have to keep going through all this, and it's just taking up time, and it's, it's useless.
Well, like Jay said, we still owe NEMCOG, and I think we could still take advantage of their services to help finish up, but on the other hand, maybe it's time for us to consider a strategy going forward and not let the Planning Commission finish it, and maybe we'll take on that task as a Board. I don't, I don't know. That's something that we need to figure out.
That's definitely possible. I just wanted to say that I respect Jan for wanting to try to mediate this thing, but this is beyond mediation. This, you can't, the facts are facts, and you have to agree on the problem before both parties can come together and try to mediate it. And they see us as the problem, and that's a no-starter. It just will not work out. We are where we are. The only thing you can do at this point in time is do what Kim is suggesting, and then we go from there. But I do agree that we need to finish the, the master plan. And I also agree with Kim that it's not that difficult. We spend more time arguing, we can spend that time working on the master plan and get it done. We can get some volunteers in here, and that's what it takes. We will get it done.
Well, and there's, I mean, like I said, in Sheboygan County, we can't be the only ones that have a Planning Commission. If these other Townships can figure it out, I'm sure that we can, that we're very capable of it.
Now, just remember that we did not cancel the NEMCOG contract.
I did not, I did not say that.
Hang on. If you get the draft of the 10-year plan done, you still need NEMCOG to do all the coordination with all the different various levels of government, tell us how to do the public hearing. There's a process that takes a number of months, and you still would need a NEMCOG in some form, maybe in a, not as, in a big role. But the problem I have is we've promised efficiency in government. A $4,000 legal bill with more coming on the Planning Commission over these fights on zoning, that's not efficient.
And compliance, yes.
It's a burden to our Township, to taxpayers, yes.
And then you've got the 16, and the other attempts to inflate the budget at the last budget, and I'll let that go.
No, we don't let that go. They asked for $4,000 to hire NEMCOG to do the CIP priority list. Now, you gotta remember, the Planning Commission doesn't even write a CIP. Everybody else does. They submit it to the Planning Commission. All they have to do is put it in a priority list. This is the most important, this is the least important. That's what they have to do. They asked for $4,000 to outsource that priority list to NEMCOG. That's what they did. They also asked to take over the training for the MEDC RRC program, which is a Board function, has nothing to do with Planning Commission, and they wanted $7,000 just for training. They have just expanded their authority in expanding what they want. I don't know if it's a committee in search for a mission because they don't have enough to do, or, or they're just wanting more authority and more power over everybody else. I don't know what's going on with that committee. But I do know that they've expanded their authority farther than what this Board or any other Board has directed them to do because the, the original resolution has never been amended and, and it's still the same, and they're still, still supposed to be advising the Tuscora Township Board of Trustees. That is their mission.
Well, there is an alternative. It's like you do with adolescents that don't behave. You increase their structure like we did in January, where we told them, "You gotta have this done by this date, and you gotta do this, you gotta do that." But then...
No, that's...
Well, there, there already is a structure in place. If you go to other counties, there are plenty of Townships that own their own zoning. But before you can have that ownership, you have to write a document about this thick that defines all of the zoning. We don't have that document, so Planning can't have that authority without that document, and we've already agreed with the county, and we're paying for the county to write and revise and maintain and administer that, that document. We're not gonna get a discount on our taxes with the county if we decide to take it over. It's just gonna cost us more. So I, I'm, if, if they want authority, the, the problem is there's a lot of responsibility to go with it.
Well, as they say in the military, what's going on here with this committee is nothing more than mission creep. Mission creep costs the taxpayers money because it has, everything has to go to the lawyer to see if this has had the authority, or do we have to write an ordinance? If we have to write an ordinance, then that has to go to the attorney. It just creates more money going out for paperwork instead of the things that need to be done in this Township, but there's a lot of things that need to be done in this Township. And I, what they're asking for, like in short-term rentals and things like that, is ordinances. And ordinances is a law which has to be gone through the attorney, go through a lot of steps, but to get zoning and have our own zoning, we'd have to have an ordinance that, let's put it this way, ordinance 200 for the county is like 195 pages long. It's huge. It's like that thick. We'd have to develop our own. Then we'd have to have enforcement.
Well, you'd have to have a zoning administrator or zoning enforcement officer.
And zoning board of appeals. We'd have to, we'd have to pay all that plus a lawyer. They'd have to have, they'd have to have their own access to their attorney. It would be very, very, very expensive. That's what it would be.
Any further discussion? Anyone else?
No.
Roll call, please.
Uh, roll call. Ken Pearson.
No. Quiet, please. You're interrupting. Chief. This is non-public. We're gonna take a short adjournment. Take a five-minute recess. I move for a five-minute recess. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll return this meeting to order. There'll be no more interruptions, zero tolerance policy. Next person that interrupts will be shown the door. You want to repeat the motion, please?
Uh, yes. The motion was to move to have the board repeal the 1970 resolution that established the planning commission.
Correct.
And there was a second?
Yes, I second that.
Jan Vance second.
No further discussion.
No further discussion.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Kim Pearson.
Yes.
Jan Vance.
Yes.
Jan Doe, Doe, who's her name? Jay Reitzman, yes. Bob Kramer?
The motion carries.
Four to one.
I'm sorry, there's only one adult in the room at the moment up at that front table. Jan, I congratulate you. I thought your suggestion was really important. We've had a planning commission since 1970. I don't know that communication or meeting between the three would help, but I certainly think for as long as we've had a planning commission, that it was worth the try. And so, I think at a moment's notice, I object to the action of the board term. The other thing I would observe is interestingly enough, the same complaints you have about the planning commission, there are many township residents that have about the board.
First off, I'd also like to offer my thanks to John Wallace for coming in and admitting his mistake. It's pretty easy to admit a mistake if you have a backbone. More than $500,000, more than half a million dollars. This is just part of what appears to be uncontrolled spending by this township board. It is not their money that they are spending, it is your money, the taxpayers' money of Tuscarora Township. At a recent township meeting, the supervisor told members of the board that the township had to stop the spending on all CIP items because of a low fund balance. We have to wait until we get more taxes in before we can continue spending taxpayers' money. What I happen to think is a very good example of how this board likes to spend money is the fundraising sign out front. Bob was told after this year's fireworks show that Indian River had the second-best show in northern Michigan. This was after the township spent more on the fireworks show than ever before. Bob now wants to spend more than $15,000 of taxpayers' money and raise another $40,000 for more than a total expenditure of $55,000. Yes, Bob wants to blow up your money at the rate of more than $1,000 a minute just so he can claim to be number one and the show is not even going to be on the Fourth of July. Just think of all the debris that's going to be falling into the lake. Think of the pets that would be frightened, but Bob will get to say he's number one. Bob likes to put out his newsletters telling everyone how much he has done for this township and all he has really done is cut deals for his friend and spend your money. Thank you.
Kim, I would like to apologize to you. I was just trying to find out, there was so much talk, I didn't know what the resolution was. That's all I wanted, so I apologize to you. And I also would like to...
I said I apologize.
Thank you. I also would like to know why this board does not take Craig Walden's. You asked him a question a couple of months ago about the parking and he said, "We don't need parking." He said, "We have three, I believe, three, possibly four times out of the year." I ride my bike all hours of the day, night. There's parking up here, guys. I think you're wasting my taxpayer dollars by trying to find more parking. Maybe talk to Craig and see if maybe you can rent his lot for some parking. But you keep talking, "We need parking," I'm not seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that repealing the 1970 resolution was already done. It's been done since, since 2008. What we were waiting for is the, is the replacement and that was supposed to happen and is pending, I believe, the attorney for an ordinance. It has to be replaced with an ordinance. Even though we don't have the ordinance, if you read the law, we're still required to act under Act 33. What, what you read, that paragraph that you read is straight out of the planning commission handbook that the municipal, the Michigan Municipal League puts out. So, we're not doing anything that any other planning commission is not doing, other than we don't have zoning. We do report to the board. We don't plan, we don't do a master plan without board approval. It's in the contract and if you read through the contract with NemCog, every step is outlined. So, what you guys just did, you didn't need to do. What we really need to do is have that, that ordinance put in place so that we are compliant. The law doesn't care whether you call us a planning commission, a committee, it doesn't care. It also doesn't care what you call the master plan, it's still the master plan. You can call it whatever you want to. You can do it however you want to, but you have to follow the law and the law is specific.
Yes, the residents of Chippewa Beach subdivision want to know why the one uninhabitable trailer on Frontak was removed and not the two remaining trailers in the Blight area, as was supposed to happen with the Blight grant that the township received. Why wasn't this Blight project completed when the equipment was on site and when will it be completed?
Public comment?
Hello, I'm Rod Grandy, supposed to be the newest member of the planning commission. Maybe not now.[1144.58][1144.58](laughter) As I started to pay more attention to the planning commission and the relationship with the township board, I became somewhat concerned. Everyone needs oversight, but the planning commission is costing the taxpayers of this township thousands of dollars in attorney fees because of false accusations made towards the board. We just heard someone right before me saying, "You have to follow the law, the law of the law." And every time they do that, you have to contact your attorney and it costs money. So, not to mention the $16,000 that's went to NemCog with not much to show for it. The master plan appears to be moving along extremely so and so far it looks to be a lot of copy and paste from larger municipalities. I think the board really needs to question if they're being good stewards of the taxpayers' money, if they continue on with the planning commission as it is. Personally, I'd like to see the board cut some corners, take the money from the planning commission and hire a township manager. Thanks.
Public comment? Yes, sir.
Tyler Gorall. I believe I'm a little bit on the younger side of folks that are here. So, speaking from that perspective, I'm hoping to have at least another 50, maybe 60 years if I'm lucky in this area to be paying taxes, living, raising my family. Myself, I believe in a lot of things that less is more, including a lot of times when it comes to government as well. It has its job, but things can get muddled, there can be issues and I'm happy to see the board do what they did tonight. I believe streamlining things is always the best option. Yeah, happy to see it and I appreciate the work you guys are doing.
Public comment? Public comment is closed. Board comment? Anyone?
I have got something. First of all, before we go any further, I'd like to thank all the members of past and present planning commissions for their hard work. Their service was appreciated. There's some bumps in the road right now. I think that the board will work this out. We've got to come up with a strategy to move forward and we will and it will not take forever. We're going to get to work on this right away. But I just want to make sure that everybody that's ever worked on the planning commission, with the planning commission, I thank them for their service. I really do. It's not easy. It's a volunteer job. You take time out of your families and your personal life to come and work for the township for free and I, and I truly, truly, truly appreciate their hard work. The direction is just different right now. We'll figure it out, we'll move forward, but I just wanted to let everybody know that I do thank them for their work. Second of all, there was a question about light and I'm going to bring you up to date on that and it should probably have been my report, but there's not that much to say right now, but it's, it's coming. First of all, the cemetery building, Mr. Foster is our contractor there. He's finishing up a job over on Barbara. Soon as he's done with that, which should be any time now, he expected to be at the cemetery building, working on the last week of August, but we're kind of into the first week of September. It's still not happening yet, but I'm sure it'll be happening very soon, as soon as he finishes up that project and he'll be fixing up that building. As far as Frontak is concerned, the Shams, that is moving forward. The one trailer was taken out because they could not get a title for that and the state, because of the state land grant, state land bank grant, required a title. They could not find a title, they could not find a VIN number and mobile homes are similar to vehicles and so they had to have either a title or a VIN number. They could not find either, so they chose to take that trailer out at their own expense. So, we are reevaluating and getting new estimate on the, the other trailer, the other large, the white one there. I had the asbestos, we had to have, we were required to have an asbestos survey done. That has been done this last week and we expect the report to be given to us by the end of this week and then we can move forward either with a contractor, we have the contractor, or we move forward with asbestos abatement, which that will take some time to do if they find a certain percentage of asbestos in that trailer, then we have to have abatement done and we'll move forward with that, you know, if, if it's necessary. The contractor that received the bid for this, because there was such a delay with them trying to find the titles for both those trailers and everything, he put this at the end of his job list for the summer. So, he's looking at the end of October or into November before it's done, but we have to have this done during this fiscal year, this calendar year, I should say. It has to be done and it will be done. We have everybody in line, ready to go. We're just waiting for the reports to come back so we can move to the next level and it's taking time. But our, our contractor, I have been in contact with him several times in the last several weeks, making sure that this is going to be done. He says, "Once he gets the okay and once he gets his crew up here towards October, November, it'll take him three to four days and it'll be gone." As far as the second, there's like a travel trailer over on that third lot. There's two lots that we took the Blight elimination grant on that belongs to Catherine. The other one belongs to her mother. We did not get a grant for that particular lot because we couldn't, there were some complications trying to get that done in a short amount of time. So, that was not part of the grant, but the two mobile homes were and we thought that that was essential, that at least we get those taken care of. And we'll be working with that other trailer because they wouldn't have qualified for this Blight elimination grant with a travel trailer anyway. It had to be a residence type of residential type of thing. So, that's why we went with the two lots. So, I hope that answers your question. Things are moving forward as best as we can with the time that we have and the time restraints and stuff. So, that's, that's moving forward. Now, for my, my board comment that I wanted to say, I just want to let you know, your elected officials and employees, especially our employees because we're working in Tidaf, are working very hard at giving back to this community. Just look around. We have paved, gravelled, brined and improved many needed roads throughout our township. We have improved the cemeteries, cooperation park, highway park, the township building and steps to the river, Marina Park, the airport, just to name a few. Personally, on our own time, we are volunteering at food bank distributions, paying out of personal funds to purchase radio ads that promote the Tuscarora Township and we will be working at the community dump day on Saturday as well. Don't forget, that's this coming Saturday. We're the only township in Chippewa County that is growing with good and positive growth. We are doing whatever we can to improve the community wherever we can, both professionally and personally. This is what you should expect from your elected officials and this is what we expect from ourselves. So, I think I can speak for everyone at this table. We are very grateful for the opportunity to be able to serve the citizens of this community and we are thankful to live in such a wonderful place. Many call Indian River a heaven on earth and that's my public comment. Thank you.
Public, board comment?
I'll go next.
Yeah.
Summer tax bills, final day to pay without penalty or interest is September 14th. That's just a couple of weeks away. I will be here in the office this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 to take payments because it's the last Saturday before the deadline. We are about 45, about 45% of the parcels have paid their taxes to date. Most of the money goes to either the county or the school district, so we don't get to keep much of it here on this go-around, but I appreciate the work that people in the office have put in to help process all the payments. It's, it's, it's an interesting process.
I think, do you want to think that? I just wanted to mention again that there is no election this November in Tuscarora Township or obviously August has already passed. Next year, there'll be, right now, the data would say, or it hasn't been confirmed, that February 27th would be the presidential primary and then first week in May could be a school election, school millage election. Then there's going to be the, the primary in August and the general election in November. So, we'll have four elections more than likely next year, but the ink's still wet, so we don't know for sure. So, just FYI.
I want to say that if anybody rode their bike downtown or went downtown this weekend, there was evidence that there was a parking problem, especially around the brewery and it was, it was a Matt house and I was really happy for Matt because he's put so much hard work into it and it's really given Indian River a name of, a good name from the, I hear in, I work in the Taski and I hear about the brewery in the Taski, how great it is and how fun it is and so I am really happy. But we do need to get the parking out of control and as I believe Sally mentioned, that there is a parking problem. So, it is evident that there is a parking problem and it's a good problem because we're bringing people into our community and... and they are supporting our community. So I'm happy about that. And also, with the last planning commission that I watched, they were talking about giving up their time and everything and how much they would rather be on Burt Lake. So I hope now you can enjoy that a little bit more. You'll have more time to enjoy Burt Lake. You won't have to spend so much time with the planning commission business. And I just hope that we can move forward in peace and harmony as adults in this room. We may not always agree, but I hope that we can always agree to disagree and be civil about it. And just move forward in peace and harmony and just try and make Indian River that shining north star that is on the map. And I hope that people will represent us well. And I plan to do that.
Thank you, Kim. Because we don't have a newspaper anymore, I've got a lot to say, but I go as fast as I can. Mark, could you stand? This is my neighbor, Mark. He's got a hangar at the airport, and he has volunteered to spend very hot days striping the airport runway, which will save this township five to 10 grand at least. And then... Jim Purtle actually bought a striping machine back in the day, and Mark got it working. He bought the paint for us. We reimbursed him from the paint. Now he's buying parts out of his pocket. I wish he'd give me a bill for that. And then he has agreed, if he has time, to help us paint the lines on this parking lot, Devo Beach, and the place across the street, time allowing. So all in all, the way I was doing my rough calculations, we were probably going to save $10,000 in labor painting lines. I want to thank the deputy supervisor speaking of lines for getting the safety yellow painted that we had overlooked. It looks really great. But just so you know, that little bit of yellow paint cost us $3,700. So if we have this $5,000 machine, we're going to learn how to use it. Just give me a second. Blight, you talked about fireworks, fake news. The board, in our act, I believe, we gave $15,000 like we always do?
We did last year, and we're doing to give this year again.
Right. So we're going to raise an additional 25 for a total of 40. And we'll see how that goes. I've got some more money today. The community's real, really stepping up. And I want to thank Columbus Beach Club for their recent donation. And thanks to Jan for teaching me how to track that money. I want to give a big thank to this board and the previous board. And here's why. We just had something significant happen last week. We closed on 8.8 acres at Commerce Park. Why is that important? When we finally decided to sell and we talked up what we really needed, we had a gentleman and his family step up and say, "I'll take care of workforce housing, not Section 8 housing." I can assure you, within the next two to three years, depending on the economy and interest rates, you will see 60 to 80 multifamily apartment units in Indian River. And that is a very, very big deal. Every time I talk to a businessman or a businesswoman, I get the same thing. There's no place for my employees to live, even if I can get them. I know two businesspeople that are putting their employees in their homes. You know, we have teachers that can't afford a decent place to live. And they're living way the hell out, what have you. So I'm very, very excited about this. We're planning on doing some upgrades to the sewer system because we're going to have quite a few RUs. Plus, we have another gentleman, former NFL star by the name of Teeter, who bought the property across the street and was looking at putting 60 units in there. I call them man cave condos. I don't know what he calls them. Half of them will be like storage units with a bathroom. Half of them will be actual condos. And also, also with the 40, the 60 to 80 units, I wanted to let you know that we, this board, put a short-term rental restriction. So it's workforce housing, professional housing. You know, the nurses, the doctors, the people that need a place to live so they don't have to live in Petoskey or, you know, Alanson or some other place. So that's a really big deal. Please don't quote me on this, but we have a very, very good chance at the same location of getting a Marriott hotel. The feasibility study, Phase 1, is completed. It looks really good. Could support as many as 70 to 75 rooms. But it's not a done deal because if you knew Marriott, they're very, very straightforward, and they get all their ducks in a row. And so we have a little bit of work to do. River steps. The bad news on river steps. It's just been one problem after another between old clay pipes, as we've all discussed, and broken sidewalks, broken drain tiles. What we originally thought was $22,000 is going to be almost 80 now. So we knew that it was going to be 67 when we got the bids, plus the engineering fees. But then we ran into the old pipes from, I don't know, gosh knows how long they were, 30, 40, 50. They're all clay pipes. But hopefully, we'll have that done in the next week or so. And we have contingency money and Samarca money, I believe. Jan?
Yes, Samarca.
Yes, Samarca. I can't think of anything else? Did I miss anything?
VA.
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 Oh, VA. Sorry. The 12th.
A week from today.
A week from today. And we will be, the VA, along with Congressman Bairdwin and the entire community, will be invited for a dedication ceremony in early November to honor Justin T. Peyton, PFC Peyton, who Congress named this facility after. So put that on your calendar. I think it's maybe the fourth or so. I'll give more information later when we nail it down. But I'm doing everything I can to make sure that it's open to every community member that wants to come. So thank you all very much for coming. I'm sorry it took so long. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.
I support it.
In favor?
Aye.